Educating, Informing, Serving. TV Keeping Government Honest.
I'd like to call the D E D to order at 6:00 P. M. On Monday, June 6th at the Grafton Town Hall. First order of business is to adopt the agenda. Do I have a motion? Please.
I'm all.
Oh, yeah, we have.
I'd like to add that under, I think, Building Committee does, Building Committee, I think it's the best place to put it, of the Craig's property and her office.
Okay.
Michelle Craig's.
All right, so.
Mr. Chair, I have a couple of suggestions, please.
Yes?
First of all, under number three, I believe we approved the May 9th minutes on May 16th. So you may be able to take that item off the agenda.
Okay.
And also, under item number six, I wonder if the Selector would agree to move the topic of the expenditure report until Kim can be here, so that she'll be able to answer our questions.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree.
Maybe we could just move it to the next meeting?
I'm sorry, you're move which one?
Expenditure report.
Okay, so let's start over again. A motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
So.
We have time, second. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? All right, so since we only have one minute. Are there any additions or corrections to the amendment? Twenty-three.
You have two, you have the.
I thought we did the nine.
Twenty-third and sixteen.
I'm going to adopt the minutes of May 16th.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
All, do we know further? All, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now we have the meeting schedule. Number forty-third.
I don't, I didn't print them out.
Yeah?
I didn't print them, so.
No, we didn't print this. I had the sixteens. We got the ninth.
I had one of the twenty-third, yes, it's there. On the, okay.
I'm going to adopt the minutes of May 25th.
Okay. Do we have a second?
All second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so. I already before, Danny, if you'd like to.
Sure.
Give us an update?
There is no update on FEMA. They're, they're just still processing the stuff. Everything they said was going through good. The Fed, I haven't seen any money back that I would think would be coming pretty soon.
But it was fine, everything was.
Well, it's all filed, we're just waiting on it from them. I do think the FEMA stuff has been sent back to some of it to the state blue project, and then they are the ones that dispersed the money. It doesn't come directly from FEMA. So some of the projects have gone through some of the first channels, I guess. Have anything on that other than that? Other, we're working on the Better Back Road grants. They finished up, like David finished up the one on Ray Richard. They're working on Cambridge Port One, which were leftover grants from last year. And we've got some shoulder work out in Polen, Otonville, along the side of the road. And I'm going to see about borrowing a, they call it hot box, so we can patch a bunch of puddles with hot mix that doesn't get cold on before we get it out, because there's so many on thirty-five and going to just again, going down one side of one. So I'll see if I can possibly borrow one of them, so we can get some of that done. Other than that, I'm sure we're starting going around and grading again, yeah, recently to be some rain.
Are you going to do any mowing?
Yep, they're going to be starting to do some of the mowing. Austin is, he said he was going to start today doing some of the bridges and guardrails.
Put that one out by Austin.
Yeah, it did, came, I told him, starting the Cambridge Port Bridge, I mean, Benfield Bridge first, and the two worst, and then work in between, so.
Danny, last time, at our last meeting, we talked about the village park and the drive and the culverts that are going to be up there. First of all, welcome back. And I just wondered what the status of that is.
I've taken the culverts up and the fabric and not the hot box there already.
Yes, I have.
So as soon as we get the grant project on the port road, then I will go up there and get the culverts in.
So how long do you think that will be?
I'm hoping another week on the port road and that will be done. Because that grant has to be done by the end of July. So I just want to get that one completed.
And there was some, this touch of discussion about planting grass up there, or had you and Al worked that, all that?
I think that was just Al doing that.
Oh, yeah. I think Al was going to do that, okay, I missed something.
He was going to buy it.
He was going to buy it, that's okay. Okay, good, thanks.
Anybody else, any other names?
What about this Tutten Forest Road culvert that we got on course lines about?
Oh, we don't have that yet. We just, I can report on it. We, they called and said they had one hundred and thirty-five thousand. We looked around and that's been a troublesome culprit. It is right about the right price for the one hundred and thirty-five to cover enough so that we are match. At one hundred and thirty-five, our match of being twenty percent is, I mean, ten percent is basically thirteen thousand five hundred. So if the culvert is one hundred and twenty-seven, then we're fine. We are, probably, we have an estimate of one hundred and fifty. But we looked at it again, and that one hundred and fifty was a forty-eight foot culvert. The width of that road is twenty-one feet. Talked to Scott Jensen again, he says it can be shorter. We think around thirty-two and thirty-three feet, which will mean the cost will be less. However, not included that, well, included in that estimate is closing the road. But you can't close the road unless you're going to let a bunch of food over there beforehand, because there's no way out. So we will, it will probably be with a temporary bridge, it will probably be right around one hundred and fifty, everything being equal, by the time, this time next year, there could be one hundred and seventy-five for most, but it's one hundred and thirty-five sixty money we get, and we have to, and our match is ten percent. And that's why we did, we picked that one, simply because economically it worked out unlike the one we're going to do next year on Cambridge Brook Road, which is about sixty thousand match, simply because of the amount that V Trans gave us.
Well, you'll be talking about closing early, days, weeks, or?
A week, a week. And there's no way, it's too narrow, there's no way to build half of it. But and, you can't really lay out how you emboss culvert in halves, because you really want the whole thing to be, you can, but it probably won't be really hard to do. You want the whole thing to be flat, then put the bottom pieces in, they're all clam shells, fill that full of rock, put the clam shell on top. That's what you're going to build, you don't want to build a tavern.
So any more direct paperwork? You go on, also, right? Or anyway, I'm kidding. As if seven on day, case before week, is maybe cheaper.
Well, I thought they got all, they got a lot of cases apart. I have a, we don't.
There's room enough to build a temporary passenger end of it.
And if, and if I could explain a little bit more, if I explained it to Hardy today, just really abruptly, the passage would go on the Westerly side, on Hardy's houses side, because that's, the other side is impossible. And then as you take that out, you're going to leave part of it, because part of the problem there is the stream bank is so low that it is, active very deep and comes right over the stream bank. So when you take that road out, you'll leave part of that as the, as the stream bank. So you'll raise the stream bank on the southern, totally side of the grid, as you're, as you're coming off, coming off the jobs. But just a little, we haven't had, we don't, we don't have that, we haven't been approved yet. Well, the application has been sent to V Trans, recommend approval, and they'll probably get it back in a couple of weeks, and then it'd be bid out, but it probably won't be built until next year. Right.
But thought we just had that approved.
Oh, no, nothing very bad.
Approved, we made, we, we got it back, approved by Mark Pickering to proceed to V Trans for approval. We had, they saw the district, they recommend approval to V Trans, but it hasn't been approved.
But also, as those to that, that size of the culvert is going to be smaller than what the hydraulic study said, too.
It's smaller, but that, but Scott says he doesn't know why it was so big. Scott says he doesn't know why it was so big.
Right, but that's going to affect your car, because that is smaller.
Yeah, so it's going to be, that's going to be smaller, but it's going to also, because we need to bypass, it's going to be bumped back up.
Yeah.
All right. Quirky treasure. Kim's here, Ken, if you have something you want to be able to film? I just, the, the digging will not occur for the upgrades. We're going to bump the, it's going to be put in here by Green Mountain Power. We are going to meet with Green Mountain Power on the fifteenth at noon to discuss the project, and then proceed from there. It, it, it's a little bit complicated, and Greg doesn't want to meet without a meeting, and people have been on vacation, or this, that, and everything. So we're going to meet on the fifteenth, set a date for the digging, and then go ahead with that. The unregistered dog report, that, you need to look at that, and you need, if, you, you need to make a motion to send it to the constable, or the constable to take care of. The humane, but I'll stop there, going to do that. Somebody want to make a motion to send?
I have a question about it in this. So Bill, would you just clarify the flat fee of three hundred and eighty-five thou, a three hundred and eighty-five?
No, we're not there yet.
Oh, okay.
We have to, a motion to, to send the list of the unregistered dogs to the constable.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought we were in the contract.
We need a motion to, to do that.
I'll get the motion.
Second.
You have any other discussion?
Do we have a note of unregistered do, unregistered dogs?
There's a list somewhere.
You didn't get it, it was sent to you.
Yeah, I, I don't have it.
Wow.
I didn't see a list of unregistered.
Well, it really doesn't make much difference, I mean, it's a list of. Well, might, it might not hurt for everybody to look at that list while we're talking about other things, because there's people on there that you're going to be a little bit surprised. It wouldn't hurt.
I remember it's not Sasha.
We still haven't filed out any things about the sheriff's department.
No, I won't talk about it. Under, I mean. I have a dog, so I know.
You're on the cat license.
Yeah, the cat's on, the cat's on the license. Well, Walt approached, but he probably, I think he had a list. He's got a rap.
I'll lay it out, there's a list. That's Kim's list. Maybe we can probably went down the path.
Walt is, is deceased.
Long arm of the law. No?
Oh, yes.
Paul, you're right, do you agree?
Well, that's something a constable, I guess, would deal with that.
Yeah.
Thank God, we don't have to.
Sometimes it's about to pass on, couldn't it?
And it isn't as if there hasn't been any effort to get all those people to get these outlaws into the. Well, Kim sends a letter, has a copy, calls them, and it's not just, I mean, they just ignore it.
Kim looks at this.
Yeah.
Somebody want to make a motion that we send this?
I, Rich made a motion.
For the constable?
To send seconded, seconded comment.
Can I check that? So I didn't know if we, you wanted to go?
You need to go down.
So all in favor, I'll send this list to the constable, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
So the constable is going to follow up with each of these?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, got it.
That's it, go.
All right.
The next thing we have is the Humane Society contract, which we do every year. I could, apparently you had a question?
Yes, thank you. I just wondered if that's last thing during the debate, dollars, is what you, or is that our contract price?
That's our contract price. If, if there's a dog encountered, that person pays that fee.
Oh, I see.
Or they don't get the dog back.
I see. So that's not a fee that we have now, that's the, the family of the dog pays.
So if there's no question, if there's no other questions, somebody make a motion that we adopt the WNU Humane Society for the year 2022?
And authorize Joe to sign it, since he started with that. Please.
We have a second?
All second.
Suzanne, a second in there. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Did you want to say this earlier? Okay, so where it's spent, review the expense next, other committee? Correct? To that?
I'm sorry.
Review the expenses next meeting?
Yes, yes.
Is there any other bill that you have on the clerk cabinet? Specifically? John had a question about.
Sheriff.
Sheriff. Oh, I got a strange email from the sheriffs today, asking us to tell them what hours we want. The reason it's strange to me is that we've been dealing with the sheriff over the dog, you know, the animal control as well as is ours. So I think the question she is asking is, in the ordinary patrol contract, do you want the same amount of hours as you always had, or do you want to increase them, or do you want to decrease them? I can answer that question for her, and then she will send the contract on that. In the meantime, I'll also contact the sheriff and ask him what's happening with the animal control contract. Right, okay. So does the board have a feeling that we want to continue the sheriff's hours that we've had in the past four or five years, or should we increase it, or should we cut it, or do you want to think about this and put it off for the next meeting?
So how many hours right now, is it four hours a month? Yeah?
I, I do bring it up.
I think it's.
Yeah. It's, I think it's four hours a month, plus he does, he, well, First Sergeant does prisoner, transfer, and when he's on his way to the prison to pick him up, he'll come through the town in the morning. So it feels, those hours that he spends that where he's in transit, he doesn't, he does not count for the four hours of the contract. Now, how much time he's spending on that now, as opposed to before, I do not know. I, I know that they are not at full staff, but I think they are coming back to full staff. But, and in any case, the contract, that you're familiar with, you want to keep that, or do you want to reduce this, or increase?
It sounds like we're not familiar with the terms of that contract off the top of our heads, maybe as Joe said, you should write, I have a copy of it right here, actually.
Well, I think it's four hours a month, correct? The question, the real question is, do you want to continue as we have been, or do you want to up it or lower?
I like the fact that we have the presence of them, be nice to have them here more, as long as it's moving up.
Well, I mean, just as, I'm not sure if this is going to happen here, but, you know, with, with the situation of the country, and rise in price, and inflation, and whatever, I mean, obviously, I don't think you want to decrease your, any kind of exposure that you have. Perhaps you might want to increase it, I don't know. But obviously, we, you know, state cooperatives are not going to come.
So what does that cost, that of interest?
I don't know. It's, it's fifty-one dollars an hour. Fifty-one or fifty-two dollars an hour. So if you increase, if you increase it to six hours, times twelve, that, that times fifty-two, then it'd be like. No, no, times twelve.
I have a copy of the contract here. It says the office agrees that it will schedule deputies on a regular basis to meet a goal of approximately eight hours a month.
Oh, yeah, okay.
And it's very sporadic. When we, when we sign the warrants, you see that some, some months are fifteen hours, some months are two hours, I think eight hours is still reasonable now.
Well, that's okay. I mean, if that's what you want to do, we can, we can vote on it now, and Bill can, they can send the contract in. Or if you want to think about it, we can put it on the agenda for next week, next week, next week. So we're, we're already in June, she wants to get this done. If you delay it. Okay. The contract is going to come back in time to approve it by the end of the month. Well, you may, if you think that's enough, also make a motion, and you'll see how the board feels.
Okay. I know that we, that we maintain the eight hours of sheriff service per month in the contract for next year.
You have a second?
I don't have to see the increase, I'm sorry.
Well, if you can, I'll discuss it. If you second.
It's not an increase, it's the same. It's the same, not.
Well, shouldn't it be same?
I'd like to see an increase.
Oh, you do, I just, you made an increase, okay, okay.
No, I can, I'll second it, but I think you made a valid point.
If there's an increase, it can, we don't have that money.
No, I, I honestly, truly, I believe that you can increase any, any items that's with the inflation and the cost that, that the town is, I don't think you can, you can knowingly increase anything. And if you do want to increase it, the next, the time to increase it would be at next October, November, when we sit down on the budgets, because I think that you're going to find that the budgets are going to be extremely out of whack. I mean, I look at Dan and shakes his head, I mean, you know a few costs, you know what a culvert costs.
I see my budget.
You know what cost, and you know what everything is costing, and it's certainly, it's certainly not going to, it's not going to be in budget unless we do something about it, so. And I think you'll see that once you look at some of the, some of the numbers towards the end of, end of the, of this year.
I was thinking of increasing it to two more. But eight, ten.
Yeah, but it's, it's more money being increased, and I don't think you can do that now, personally.
I'm just concerned that be a practical matter, they hardly live up to the eight hours per month on a regular basis. We might pay for ten and not get it.
And the last one was the first one I see that had any points on it.
Come down on my way. On Main Street Two, if they don't need them.
Any other discussion about the motion?
No, I just think if there's something tangible we can hang our hat on to say we're having a problem with X, Y, Z, then I think we're going to consider increasing it. If we don't, things will have kind of spilled, I'd say, probably leave it just the way it is and move forward. I haven't heard any problems, problems that we've been having.
It's not? Call a question? All in favor of renewing the contract at eight hours per month? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye, opposed.
Okay, so it's four to lunch. Then Joe, is that satisfied? You give the sheriff mail?
I hope so.
Okay. Hardy, I guess you're up to give us a rundown on the meeting.
Okay, the, the WNU E S D has a listed meeting on May 24th, and all of the articles that were on the warning were approved. The most important ones being Article Number Four, which means now that Grafton and Athens are their own school district as of July 1st. And then Article Five, where we will be starting 2024, make a three hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and thirty dollar surplus, which can be used, and then budget after the one that we are going to be going into this July 1st, to reduce the budget to follow year or taxes, for taxes, or for additional expenses for tuition, but we will have the opportunity to utilize that money, and there could be most likely more coming from the president here.
Just in the 2024?
Yes. And I'll, I'll make a comment on the, the coming year in a minute. Article Six was related to the fact that we would like to increase the school board, and so we wanted to add one person in Grafton and one person in Athens to make a total of six. That was approved. And then the next article was, do we want to elect somebody that night? While Grafton, two or three people hemmed and hawed, but nobody committed, so we carried that over, but we would certainly like to have somebody by July 1st.
Do you need one person here? You need one?
We need one person from Grafton. Athens, a person by the name of Harold Noyes, who I guess is prior select school officer there, who board government, was elected for Athens. So Athens has three members, there are Lynn Morgan, Krista Gay, and Harold Noyes as of July 1st, and then myself and Jack Brier for Grafton as of now. Article Eight was giving the authority to Jack Brier to sign the lease. He signed the lease, and I believe we now have another lease, is that correct, Phil? That we will be signing?
Yeah, there, well.
It's like a slight benefit.
If people agree, ACIP wants us to change the language of the insurance paragraph. And, so that's what I sent to everybody to.
The school, school board is sometimes have problems.
Okay.
I've got to there.
Okay, then, and the other thing is, when we get done with the Craig's thing, we will probably want to further amend the lease by, by amending the description of the property to include the property that comes from Mrs. Craig's to the school. And the reason that that will go to the schools, because right now, the children can't get out of the school on this far end, except on to private property, or onto town property, not leased by the school, if they didn't amend the lease. So if they amend the lease, then all that property would be there, and their normal practice of walking around the school, piling the snow all the way around the school to heat the water for going in the school, would up all beyond the leased property. So that, that might be a further amendment if.
Can we get this current amendment that you sent out signed, so that we can be in line for our ESF ones?
Yeah.
Okay, that would be great.
Well, the, the, the lease, the lease that you needed for the ESF ones, that is done.
Well, I believe we also need to sign this.
Okay, then, then I can, I can get that to you guys, if that was possible.
Patty, can you?
Thinking of the ESF one. Thinking of the S R funds, I don't know whether anybody knows what they are. I don't know a tremendous amount about them, except I have reviewed and some, a little bit of detail since I got on the board. But there, there were three S R funds provided to the state of Vermont and to the top and to the district of, you know, Bellas Falls, Rocky Hand, and Grafton and Westminster. The first one was a million, four hundred and eighty-three thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars. And this had to be completed by nine thirty twenty-two, which was just coming up right now. I have not seen what they spent all the money on, but it was for COVID relief and, you know, all sorts of things related to the school during COVID. Then there was S R two, which they also have funds, which totaled five million, eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand, oh seventy-seven dollars, which has to be completed by nine thirty, two thousand twenty-three. S R two supposedly is for the loss of learning and reopening summer school and after-school programs. This money has not been spent yet, and I have not seen an accounting of it myself, and I'm on the board. It hasn't been made available to us yet. Then there's a third pot of money for thirteen million, seventy-nine thousand dollars and three hundred and fifty-one dollars, which is to be completed by nine thirty twenty-four. There is a list of, extensive list of projects that they have approached that could possibly utilize this money. Those, each project, though, has to be approved by the education department before we can, before the, the division or the group can spend it. So that's a total of thirteen million dollars. And I have tried to get in things like the boiler, which I believe will get done for the school over here, the playground equipment, hopefully can come out of some of these funds. And hopeful that'll actually come out of this budget, and even forty-eight thousand dollars available we have available, and does not require a state approval. But that's to be made seen. Tomorrow night at the Bellas Falls High School, there's what they call a community night to review this plan. And this is a plan that will be on display at June seventh at six P M. in the auditorium. It may be online. You all might want to be interested in it because it's a lot of money and it's a lot of projects. And I don't think the general population knows very much about this.
It's a lot of money.
It's a lot of, that's twenty million dollars.
Yeah, and they, and they don't have an accounting yet?
No.
Oh, my God.
Well, they haven't spent, the only thing they've spent, the million, four eighty-three and some of the five million eight, nothing has been spent on the, the rest of it yet.
And if you look at the list.
Yes, definitely.
There's only one thing on here for sixty thousand dollars that for Grafton for the water system or the water leaking or something. Nothing else for Grafton. Everything's flowing to Westminster, Central School, the high school, and one million, eight hundred and thousand for their driveway. So their fleet of buses can, you can get to the fleet of buses. So people need to go to this meeting, ask the questions. I don't see any input from parents or students or the community on that list. I did send it to you, Bill, because I, you sent the first one out, and I did the survey. Once I did the survey, I couldn't get back into that. So I called the super's office, and they sent me the whole thing.
They sent you the list, okay.
And I sent it to you.
I couldn't see the list at all.
Well, if you click on that, you'll get it. You have to go through the whole thing, and it's printed out. And it does mention that, is it A, the S R money, and then also A N R or A R N?
There's some other funds too, I'm not exactly sure what they are, but there's even more money than the twenty million that's flowing around here.
There's percentages that they have to follow, like half a percent to one percent for administration. But if you look at that list, a lot of it's administration. I'm just concerned of where our money's going.
Well, we feel a lot of rotating it out.
We don't have a nation without.
A lot of that, but totally, Michael.
Kathy, as you read this list, which thank you for doing that, I wish you that you had the, had the time to go on the school board, you'd be so great at it anyway.
Just thinking of that.
Good. Anyway, do, are these a list of proposals or are these a list of decisions that have already been made?
Proposals.
They're proposals.
They're proposals.
But they, according to what I've read, they've had meetings, and they list the people involved. A lot of them are the principals. There are some community folks. I didn't see much input from Grafton there on those lists.
I didn't either.
Well, can Grafton put list of proposals in?
If they could, yes. I mean, if there's things that we need, potentially wise, definitely should be put in.
So I would recommend folks to go to the meeting and speak up.
Yes.
I think that's a meeting. But the, but Marty, if I understood you correctly too, there's still some opportunity for possible, possibly projects in the five point eight million.
I believe there is, yes. They haven't spent all the money here. And in fact, I was told that, like this, by Andrew Boss, when I brought up the boiler and the playground, that they were hoping to do that out of that money. So that's, I don't know whether they're going to do.
Not listed.
No, well, that's a different, they didn't list the projects for the five point eight million, just the thirteen. And the projects, if you add them up, adds to more than thirteen million dollars, so.
And will those lists be available tomorrow night? Or do we figure out how to do what Kathy chimes in?
I would say they would be available at the meeting. And I have somewhere in my emails, the list of the projects, I could get that, that's something that somebody needs us.
And in a lot of, from what I've read, a lot of it is COVID related. Everything has to be attached because it's COVID.
Yeah. Which is, you know, like upgrading the air in schools. They have a lot of money in there to do that for the various schools, which I believe they don't have money in there to upgrade the, the area.
Well, I, you know, when we go over the listed list, I guess I would be waiting for it.
I spent it too.
Okay, yeah, I did.
So click on that, and it, it'll open up.
Okay.
Don't do the survey.
No, I didn't. And any other topics done?
No, I, I got one more thing I wanted to mention. Earlier this month, H seven thirty-seven was approved by the House and the Senate, and it's presently on Governor Scott's desk for approval. And what this bill, it sets the annual yield for the coming year that goes into the calculations of the tax rates. And it also sets the non-resident tax rate for the whole state for the coming year. So what they have said and put on Scott's desk for, I believe, the approval, is that the non-res rate would, would go from one point six one two this past year, and in Grafton they were one point five five four, we have the C L A, down to one point four six six. And in Grafton, that would actually be a rate of one point four three nine, because the C L A is hopefully one oh one, one oh one point eight seven for Grafton this year because of a reappraisal a year ago. But that's a reduction of eleven and a half cents on the bad res rate. So all of the non-res, people are going to classify as non-res, their taxes, the state education, they're going to go down by eleven point five cents for.
The non-resident?
Yes.
And what happens to that?
For the Hopestead people, I believe it'll go down more. No idea, you've been sacked number, but I will play.
Hasn't been that way the last two years, it hasn't been that way. We pay more.
Yeah, well, we're still maybe paying a couple cents more than one point, the four three nine, which this year we paid one point six nine. And it's going to go down more than you're looking at.
Okay.
As long as Scott signs it.
Marty, can you explain, you said something about the tax rate for twenty twenty-four? Who determines that, the school board or the town?
The, the, the tax rate?
You said there's a surplus.
Oh, the surplus?
Right.
That was determined by the, by the school board, which was the WNUESD school board, you know, that Westminster representation and Grafton Athens representation. And I actually was the one that figured out who should get what. And it was done based on the taxes that had been put in that run the schools for the past two years by Grafton and Athens and Westminster corporate percentage to us.
But it's to reduce the budget.
Well, not this year. It can be used the following year. This year, again, the budget's been set, it's a one, one million, seven hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. The Hopestead tax rate has been set based on this budget, basically. You know, that's what our taxes are going to be based on. In the following year, there's going to be probably another surplus a little bit from this one million, seven sixty-six that we're in this year. And when we come to do the budget and the tax rate for the coming year, we will have this surplus, just like the town had the surplus coming down. But the thing is, with the school, I understand, we have to use it in the coming year or we lose it because the state takes it back. So we will be utilizing that three fifty for sure, probably a little bit more if we get a safe education.
But it can be used, if I understood you correctly, for either budget reduction or paying tuition.
Yeah, and, and if you pay the tuition, you're going to be.
We're using the budget.
You could also use it to improve the facility. You could spend it on, you know, a new something.
Okay, anything else on the school? Thank you, Marty. Committee of sports, Joe, who talked about the cemetery? First interview, and I've got to get together with the new landowner of the, of the, of the, he's willing to sell us somewhere. So whenever you're available. Probably next week. My new traffic.
Are you sending the owners? Sorry?
I don't know what today's, you know, Marty?
So I have missed them. What?
Cemetery man, potential cemetery man.
No. Where are they going?
New owners are Matthew Dowd.
Dowd?
Yeah, D O W D.
The person I talked to, Sam Dowd, he's the one I could talk to. That's the Dowd's owner.
It's a, it's a family. Matthew Dowd, Daniel Dowd, and Samuel Dowd.
Are they part timers or are they here full time?
Um, they're part timers.
Okay, so we'll have to make an appointment. Okay.
And looking over the cemetery before Memorial Day, I walked through the wall, and they're in very sad shape. The fences are all falling down, split metal fences that are rotten, they all need replaced. You can't, if they suck one rail or a post, it's, it all needs to be, especially whole of them. The building cemetery is, the fence in the back, there's one session that's toppled right over. And as I understand, it's been like that for three years.
Walter was supposed to fix it, not, but.
Yes, just lays there and bow and work around that. And there's gravestones that are tilted, there's gravestones that are flat, too, and in all the cemetery. And Stevens is going to mow by Friday before Memorial Day. But they still didn't look to my satisfaction because there was a lot of debris still left in the cemetery from the cleanups, and they were running right over by the lawnmower and scattered it all over the place. And I didn't think that would look very good. We, we received a lot of complaints from people that went against the cemeteries. Last I knew, it was seven or eight kids. And I don't know if she got any more or not. But they do need, other than what, they do need a lot of work, and we could fix the minor, in the budget, or use the money that's there.
Well, that brings up the point, that there's forty, fifty thousand dollars sitting in the funds that we need to, that should be used for the cemetery, and, and we don't have money in our budget. Why put money in the budget and tax the individuals when there is money already there? That's what it's supposed to be useful. But we can't get it, we can't get an answer whether we could use this money or not. The lawyers, as I know, Bill, they never responded on that. Okay, you guys need to talk to Larry Slayson. Tell him that you are the chair of this, like, what you need to know this week, what you can do with those funds. And, and I'll give him all the, because he has non-answered B. But you guys just, you guys start on something and you never finish it, okay? And so that's what you got to do.
I will come in and I will get a hold of Larry Slayson, and I'll see you as we fill, and I'll get him to see you off the panel.
Where do the folks? They're, they're, these are funds that look in the county board, that are the cemetery funds, and they're, they're managed by the trustees of the public funds. And as I understand it, and I, I don't want to speak because I'm not a hundred percent, Ken's not here, but the old days, the monies from the graves or from other things were put into this fund, and they used to pay Howard Senior old with these funds. And then they ran out of money. So that's why we, there was a line that been out of the budget to pay for Walter or, or anybody to run. But this money now that they've built up over these years, and I believe it's close to sixty thousand dollars on the two funds. And they were supposed to, we had, Bill and I had talked to Ken about it, we sent it over to Larry Slayson, and he has not, he has not commented because there are, this, some of this money's were, were deeded, there's, there's language in the, in these old whatever. Because somebody has to interpret this so that, to see whether this money can be used or can't be used. And if it can be used, then the board can then fix these fences and fix the stones, and it doesn't have to come out of tax month. So that's, you know, that's where I, I will make sure that I will reach Larry Slayson, or if he can't do it, we'll have to find another attorney who can interpret these old documents that, and he has all these copies, it's all sent there.
So will the trustees know about this?
No. The trustees just, just handle the money, but they don't know, he, he said, this was stuff that was given years and years ago. And, you know, there were, there were multiple funds, and it's very complicated, but some attorney has to figure out whether or not we can and we can't. Otherwise, the trustee funds.
Should be some, but it's preservation.
Yeah, it's not that complicated, it's a very complicated property, I'm sorry, but it is. It's not straightforward.
Honestly, I don't remember this body taking this issue up since I've been here.
No, it's never taken it up because we never got an answer. So we will try to get an answer.
That sounds like, on a positive note, I received some, some positive feedback about Austin in connection with both Henry Mosley's burial and also the burial that the, a burial that's coming up with Barbara, yeah. And the, both, both of those families were complimentary of how Austin managed their requests. And I thought that Austin also distinguished himself in the way he presented himself at the funeral, so.
Only negative, it wasn't even a negative. Couple of comments I heard, same thing, I would get such a good job. Tom forget him on peach jar sweatshirt that says, so he looks a little more.
Yes.
Professional or whatever.
Right. He wore his, he looked very nice because he had on his Grafton Rescue Navy shirt. So, but I think it would be great if we could get him something that said Town of Grafton.
That's the only comments I heard, other than I want a good job.
Herb and Barb Williams is the other.
Do you know what size he is?
I could say.
At least two, right?
Let's talk about that. Because I can, I can have, well, my tease. Well, let's, let's ask Ken. Okay, okay, let's not.
He, he could rip my stuff.
Okay, yes, easy.
Yeah, that's a good suggestion. Yeah, that's a good suggestion.
Anything else, what? Highway, anything on the highway?
No.
Parks, nothing really.
The, the grant has been submitted.
The grant's been done.
The grant has been submitted and.
Danny's ready to do it when he gets done with his work.
In a couple of weeks. And, uh, we also received a very nice letter from Tim Morton, and I just wanted to highlight, um, that Tim said to Bill Kearns, uh, and to the Trail Committee and to the Select Board, uh, and to Al Sands, how much it was a pleasure working with all of them on this project. So I think it's been managed very, very well, and I think we should say thank you to these folks.
Okay. Personnel?
So I was just wondering, Bill, if you had the opportunity to distribute the personnel policies to all of the employees.
Yes.
Pardon?
Yes, they all have.
Great, thank you.
Anything else on the bill, on personnel? Bill, you want to build any grounds now? You want to do the, the land?
Um, yes, um, just, just go back over it, uh, when the school was built, they added twenty-five feet to the school parcel so that they could put the school on it, and then they built the back end of the school right up against the parcel line. So the, the back end of the school was right on the boundary with the Window Foundation property, which property is also in ancient history called the Subfinn property, which we all know as the Northern Star Galberry property, one fifty-one, um, Townsend that Michelle Crakes bought. When Michelle Crakes bought it, she didn't know what she bought and couldn't believe that she owned all the way back up to the school until I talked to her and said, um, according to the deeds and according to the description there, she owns back, not only that she owned back to the school, but the last six feet of her property has a building restriction on it for the school, as long as the school's right there. Uh, so I told, she is not interested in having that property, she's very interested in the, in Grafton itself and in having that, that path remain for the residents and the visitors to use, because a lot of people use it, uh, going through that town, going all the way down to the, when they do know about it, all the way down to the cheese factory rather than walking on the street. And they go off, you can go all the way to the, the market if you, if you'd known if you'd used the path. So, uh, she, uh, I, I said, well, what I would ask the Select Board to do, if they would pass through the survey, um, cost of it, uh, I would, uh, we could do a lot line adjustment, which would adjust the, the, uh, parcel that the town owns, that the school leases from us, it would adjust that, that boundary to the west all the way to her fence, right to her fence. And it would just be the Subfinn property, so it just, where her fence comes down from Townsend Road going back, it's a straight line back to the property line, there's a distance before you get to the school where the school sticks on the parcel line. And then it would be, sort of be that, from her fence lines it goes down and then it goes straight out to road, that's what, that's the line that, uh, De, De Bernardo would use as, as the parcel line. And, uh, it would cost twenty-two hundred dollars for us to, to, that, that would be the fee for the survey, twenty-two hundred dollars. What that does for us, it keeps, if we, if the school leases, when the school leases it from us, if the school leases it from us, it keeps the kids from going off, off the school grounds as soon as they step out that back door. It keeps, uh, the plow from, from plowing private property as it, or town property as it goes around the school, to keep the, the snow from melting and going in the school. And it gives the, the school more space for, when they, when the kids go from one picnic table to the other back behind the school, they'll be on the leased property. So it will, uh, there won't be any question of, uh, insurance coverage for the school, uh, and, uh, and, and they'll have the room. Michelle won't have to worry about, uh, covering the path and fixing it herself, she doesn't want to do that anyway, but she, she won't have to worry about the public using her property for a path and then having an issue, possible issue of potential liability for somebody getting hurt on it. So I think it's a really good thing to do, I think, uh, it keeps people off the Townsend Road to the extent that they know about that path, they can get all the way to the cheese factory and beyond without walking on Townsend Road. And I think it's really a good deal for us, and I think that we should thank Michelle Crakes for wanting to do that, and I think the twenty-two hundred dollars in fees, not very much to do it. Oh, by the way, uh, the, uh, Window Foundation, Bob Dunn called me today, um, he wasn't aware of the actual size of that parcel, and so when I explained to him, I sent it to him, he was happy with, with that outcome too. And, uh, so they have nothing to do with that parcel anymore, they sold it, uh, he's happy that the path would stay. So you're looking for a motion, I'd like to have a motion to allow me to prepare, uh, the, a lot line adjustment and to hire the, uh, and the only, the only cost of lot, lot line adjustment, um, as far as the town goes, is the application fee of two hundred and fifty dollars, but I think we can waive that since it's the town applying. That application would be signed by Michelle Crakes and by the town, so authorizing Joe to sign it, for instance. And so that would be to prepare the application for the, for that and to hire, um, De Bernardo and Associates to prepare the, uh, survey. We can do, if, and we, we can do the lot line adjustment, have it all completed without the survey being completed, using a sketch plan. Because our laws say, our regulations say that, the, uh, survey has to be recorded within a hundred and eighty days of the decision being made. The lot line adjustment is not adhering, I simply publish that to all the others, and if no one can give a good legal reason why it shouldn't be done, with, within fifteen days from the day that they receive the notice, I can sign the lot line adjustment and that completes it, except for the filing of the, the, um, survey, which would happen probably in September, he thinks they'd have it done in September.
Okay, so I guess.
Can I have, can I ask who maintains this pathway in this land?
No.
The town?
No.
Or the school?
Nobody, nobody.
If you do this and it, and it goes under the lease, the school would.
Surely, if it goes under the lease?
The school.
So who understands this? Is the property actually going to belong to the town?
Pardon me?
I had Kathy, I think I was.
No, the property, the property belongs to Michelle Crakes.
No, no, but when we do this lot line adjustment.
It would belong to the town.
Town.
So the new, so the, the, Michelle's property will end at her fence, is that correct?
Correct.
And then the new town property will go to the parcel line of the school.
Yes.
Which includes the path.
Yes.
Okay. And the impetus for this topic coming up in the first place was Logan's email about the state of disrepair of the path.
That's what's on it to us.
That's why, that's why.
I'll tell you, I'll tell you what's important to that. You have kids walking out the back door of the school on the private property.
I understand.
That should, that should have concerned a lot of people a long time ago, but they didn't remember it.
Now, if, believe me, I think that this is, uh, this is a very win-win situation that you, that you helped negotiate here, Bill. But my question remains about the path, it is in a severe state of disrepair, and it does talk about liability, it does need to be repaired. So who appears?
Well, you guys can repair it. If, once it's done, you guys can have it repaired, uh, whatever way you know to do it, but once it becomes under the lease, then it's the school's, by the, by the very least. We don't do anything on that property by the very least, if that's the same, if that is part of, when we amend, if we amend simply the land description and the school accepts it, they would, they would have full responsibility for that.
Okay.
In the meantime, you guys could order the Highway Department to fix it.
Much as I said, if we deal with, we deal with the lot, lot line adjustment, and let's put the path on, on the agenda for the next meeting.
Okay.
And that'll give us an opportunity to, to maybe, whatever.
You can't, you cannot fix that path until you own the land.
That's what I'm saying, so that's why we need to do the lot line adjustment.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. I just want to make sure I'm clear that when, and if, if and when the school signs the lease, their leased property will extend to Michelle Crakes' fence, is that correct?
If they accept an amendment to the description of the property, yes.
Okay. So there's not going to be a division between where the school owns and the town.
I can't answer that question, that's up to the school. If the school doesn't want to lease it, they have to.
Can you answer it in terms of the proposal that we're about to make?
The proposal that, the proposal that I would, that I would suggest you make to the school is that they amend the description of the property by accepting that portion that we are talking about onto the school's leased property.
And the, and that portion we're talking about extends to Michelle's fence?
From her fence to the school.
To the fence to the parcel line of the school.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's time sensitive in the sense of what we're doing with the school? Is this the whole?
I think it's, I think it's time sensitive for liability, I think that's, that's your liability. So I, I think the motion should indicate, as Bill said, if you approve the lot line adjustment, and, uh, we should waive the two hundred and fifty feet since it's the town. So basically, what you're going to do is vote for this and you're going to pay the twenty-two hundred dollars for the survey fee.
And was that money coming back?
I would like to authorize Joe to sign the.
There'll be money in, in the legal, there, there's, there's some, there is some way in the budget to do this kind of stuff.
One of the things that Michelle is asking for, and she's been very clear about that, is that the path, um, stays open because it serves a lot of people and keeps pedestrians off the Townsend Road. If and when this parcel gets leased to the school, will the school then have the liability for people walking on that path?
They would.
And their, their insurance would have to cover that.
They have that, they have that same issue right now with the parking lot, that, that easement that goes down the other way, that's a public easement all the way through the parking lot, that's the tunnel ball pole down to the thing, that's it, that's a public easement.
But we're not talking about a public easement here, are we?
It is, probably just walk out of the park, I'm sure it's a public easement.
So does that, does that need to be part of what we agree to tonight?
What I asked, what I asked Joe when I sent him the thing, what I'd like to see on that, on his survey, is that the property, that the path be kept and maintained and that no other use be made of that property, uh, except used as a path, maybe a bench, something like that. But put that right in our agreement with her, that they're not going to put anything else back on that property. It'd be used as a path, it's a way, and for them to move the students around it, you know, at the school, they, they, they go from table to table, they, they use, they use the outside a lot for classes.
So what I think I just heard you say is there would be a type of public easement that would be described in the document that Michelle is going to sign, that, uh, Devo's going to put together for us?
It will be public property. I don't know if you, you know, I don't know if you need a publication, it would be public property, and, but.
Well, it's going to belong to the school.
Yeah, but it's public property.
Okay, just so, what I'm trying to do is get clear that when we agree to this, that it will be understood by the Select Board and the school that that path will remain for visitors and guests.
Yes.
And that people who walk on the path, if the school is leasing it, will need to probably get, that they would be covered by the school's liability insurance.
I'm not in the term, so I cannot answer that. But I'd begr, I'd beg, guess they would, just like anybody coming on the state property right now.
Okay.
All right, so we need a motion. Bill, we want to.
Uh, so you approved, approved applying for the lot line adjustment, authorizing Joe to sign, waive the fee, um, and the conditions of the lot line adjustment will be that the, that the path stays.
Right.
And that there be no other use other than open area for the school. Uh, and that we pay, um, the cost of the survey.
And we waived the two fifty.
Yeah, I said that.
Okay. All right, somebody want to make, make that motion?
I don't know.
Fair statement.
Second.
Okay, I, I think we have enough discussion, but do we have any more? I think we're all clear now. And, all right, so all voters say aye? Oppose? Okay, good.
So we get a copy of this, of the Select Board?
Copy of.
The, um, well, the, the motion will be in the minutes.
Motion will be in minutes, but more importantly, the, the agreement between you and, and the Select Board and Bill and, and Mrs. Crakes will, will be the application, because it'll state all the conditions in the application.
You'll have that.
There won't be a separate agreement with it.
I got it, okay. And then did we also say that on the next agenda, on the agenda for the next Select Board meeting, we will discuss the repair of the path?
We can talk about it, yes, I'll put it on.
Okay. Because meanwhile, until we have, when, when we sign this agreement, let me understand the sequence of events here, when we sign, uh, when we sign this agreement with Michelle, which will be her application, and until such time as the school signs the lease, the town will own that property. And if there's an injury on that path, the town will be responsible for that.
Well, somebody going to the school all the time.
But the school, I'm, my, my eventuality that I'm discussing here.
Okay, just, just so we clear.
Is in the time between when we start the agreement with Michelle and if and when we start the lease.
When I sign after the fifteen days are up and say, okay, the town now owns, from that day forward, our insurance will, will encumber. Prior to that time, it's Michelle.
It's Michelle.
It's Michelle.
Right, right, that's what, that's, that's what I thought.
If, I don't want to get that complicated, but if you're going to fix that path tomorrow.
You can't, you can't fix it until you own the property.
No, we can't fix it until we own it.
Okay, then, then.
You can't fix a property.
Then if people fall on it, that's Michelle's issue.
That's Michelle, I understand, and I, that's not what, that's not the topic I brought up. The topic I brought up is when the town owns.
Yes.
And I think that it would behoove us to have that path repaired.
Well, once we own it, I don't think it'd be very long before it's fixed.
Yeah, okay. All right, so, Joe, you want to talk about the way it came from, so, anymore?
Uh, the other one that will come when it comes, if it has, and got it in. I don't know what else to say, and, uh, they are, with regard to the elevator, they are contracting with All Seasons to do the work of toppling in the fall.
There's no wastewater. Do we have any other business?
I don't.
If there is, do we have any public company? If not, the next regular meeting is.
Oh, I didn't have other business, sorry. Uh, I was just wondering, Don Dougal in our last meeting, uh, went over a number of action items that pertain to the town, and I just wondered what this task of those is. They're, they're presented in the minute.
I thought, I thought you thought the, the Don Dougal's questions that were there, S and Z.
Maybe it'd be fine with me if we put this on the agenda for the next meeting, Joe, instead of trying to do it now?
Yeah, no, no, we'll.
One of them that brought my attention. Parked down on one, twenty-one. Right inside towards the road or across from Crakes. I wasn't there to meet.
Yeah, the, yeah, let's, let's, I'll be actually.
Are we agreeing to put it on the agenda?
Yeah, we'll put it on the agenda.
Okay.
Now we deal with Bill on his comments.
Did you want to say something about the police or the other, about the, on the, on the other comments?
No, no, we talked about it.
That's covered a lot.
That's the other thing that, we talked about with the show. So the next regular meeting is Monday, it's not June sixth, it'll be, what is it, sixteen?
That's right.
I don't have to say.
The twentieth.
The twi, whatever, the next meeting will be the twentieth, the twentieth of June. Motion for Joe? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.